Second meeting of the Mayor and City Council will come to order. I'll ask everybody to rise for the invocation by Reverend Warren H. Litchfield and the pledge of allegiance led by the President Pro Tem Donna Crery.
We gather this evening here to conduct the business of this city. So, all, by prayer for the Mayor, for the President, for the members of the City Council, and all in authority, grant unto them a sense of justice, strength, and wisdom as they perform their duty in behalf of all thy people. We specially commend your gracious care and keeping, all the men and women of our armed forces at home and abroad, our law enforcement and fire department community. Defend them day by day with your heavenly grace, strengthen them in their trials and temptations, give them courage to face the peril that beset them, and grant unto each a sense of your abiding presence wherever they may be. Remember those upon which I bear affliction; comfort those who mourn. In thy name we pray. Amen.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to its republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Call or roll, Ms. Row.
Mr. Smalls?
Here.
Ms. Crery?
Here.
Ms. Nicholas?
Here.
President Laz?
Here. I'll note that both the Mayor, Mayor Moe, and Councilwoman Jan Robinson are a bit under the weather and hope they're feeling better. We'll see them in a couple of weeks. Move to agenda item number five. Second public hearing with possible action on ordinance number 1729, map amendment number 824, an ordinance to approve map amendment application number 824 for rezoning of property known as Anderson's Corner located at 6901 Van Duzen Road, Laurel, Maryland, consisting of 25.358 acres, identified as tax parcel eight by Peggy M. Herman and all, located at the northeastern intersection of Van Duzen Road and Virginia Manor Road for placement in the MXT zone with the conceptual development plan as required in section 20-12, MXT zone of the City of Laurel Unified Land Development Code. I read the title into the record for the second reading. I'll open the public hearing at 7:01. Mr. Brendel, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. President. Map amendment application number 824 was filed on May 13, 2011 by Rivera Development LLC, 2661 Reva Road, Building 300, Annapolis, 21401 to rezone tax parcel eight, consisting of 25.358 acres, William H. Brown et al., located at the southeast corner of Virginia Manor Road and Van Duzen Roads from the city R5 zone, single-family detached, to the MXT mixed-use transportation zone. On September 14, 2011, a notice of the filing of the application was sent to all contiguous property owners. All return receipts were received with the exception of Wilshire Homeowners Association, 7301 Iron Bridge Road, Laurel. On September 14, 2011, a request asking for comments was sent to the Maryland State Highway Administration, the Prince George's County Health Department, the Maryland National Capitol Park and Planning Commission, the Prince George's County Department of Public Works and Transportation, the Washington Suburban Sanitary Commission, the Maryland Department of Planning, and Prince George's County Public Schools. Sponsors received the Department of Planning. The Department found the zoning amendment was generally consistent with the state's market growth policies. On September 29, 2011, comments were received from the Washington Suburban Sanitary Commission as part of the record. Comments also received from the Maryland National Capitol Park and Planning Commission and made a part of the official record. On September 20, a request asking for comments was sent to the City of Laurel Police Department, Parks and Recreation, and Public Works. On September 20, the Department of Parks and Recreation sent a reply stating the department had no, pardon me, comments at this time. A response received September 27 was received from the police department stating the department had no comments at this time. A response was received from the Department of Public Works with a memorandum dated October the 3rd as part of the record. The file contains a certificate of publication verifying that this application in public hearing was advertised as required by law in the October 27th and November 3rd editions of the Prince George's Sentinel. A memorandum from the City of Laurel Planning Commission to the Mayor and City Council dated November 9 reads as follows. At the meeting the Commission held on November 8, the following action was taken. On motion by Mr. Kish and seconded by Mrs. Bettman and carried on roll call vote, of all members present, the Commission recommended that the Mayor and City Council approve map amendment number 824 as presented in the proposed ordinance. And that concludes the reading of the file.
Thank you, Mr. Brendel.
Yes.
Okay, the first person to have signed up to speak is Bob DePietro. Mr. DePietro, if you'll come forward and state your name and address for the record and feel free to comment.
Bob DePietro, RJD Consultants, 502 Gorman Avenue, Laurel, Maryland. Mr. President, if I may, I'm going to yield the floor to Mr. DeVito, who's representing Rivera Development as our attorney, and I'll be happy to answer any questions if there is any by the council.
Okay. Eric, state your name and address for the record, please.
Thank you. Eric DeVito, on behalf of Rivera Development, address is 2661 Reva Road, Annapolis, Maryland, 21401. And thank you very much for having us here this evening. We have come through a couple of hearings and meetings with the county council, with our work session, and with the Planning Commission. Hopefully, there isn't any new information, obviously, that will be presented tonight, but we will certainly run through the application that we're being brought before the city tonight for rezoning for the project we're calling Anderson's Corner. Obviously, you've just, Mr. DePietro has just introduced himself. I would also like to introduce Mr. John Stomato, who's seated in the front row here. He is also a principal with Rivera Development, a member of the development team as well. We, at this time, I probably will point you over to the, if it's okay, if I could wander over here a bit, I will point you to the exhibits, and I would ask that these please be introduced in the record as being introduced with our application. We presented these exact exhibits to the Planning Commission the other evening, and what they basically show, the first exhibit here is an overall aerial and a tax map of the parcel we're talking about. This green exhibit that we're looking at here, this is actually a concept plan of the Conterra Town Center East project. If you looked in this vicinity, which would be to the northeast of Conterra Town Center East, it's 25 acres, known as the Herman property or the Brown property. This property, along with the adjoining approximately 20-some acres behind it, were all annexed into the city in 2008, but this application before you right now is just these 25 acres that I'm pointing to now, referred to as the Herman property. Those are subject of the application of this rezoning. And it is basically at the intersection of the current Van Duzen and Virginia Manor Roads. As you can see, and as we've discussed several times previously, this whole area is in the process of being redesigned, the road network with two roads leading out of the Conterra Town Center East, a realigned Van Duzen, and then a new extension of Conti Road and what is being referred to as Kennelworth Extended. This is the new road network that we've discussed and one of the reasons why we're actually seeking rezoning now, because we've been approached by the state. We believe the county is also beginning its process to actually implement this new road work that is in place. So rezoning is critical to that process, to be able to figure out what type of development plan can move forward on our property. So this exhibit, again, was part of the record. In addition, we have some other detailed exhibits that show more of the SHA plans for the realigned Van Duzen intersection with what's called Kennelworth Extended. You know, the intersection that you're familiar with today of Van Duzen and Virginia Manor is going to be completely redone. There's a large area of stormwater management right off the corner of our property, which has been some substantial water pipes in there to handle the stormwater management are being proposed as well. And again, these other three exhibits that are part of the record show a little more detail of those road improvements that we've been discussing. And certainly, I won't take much more time on those exhibits, like I said, because we've gone through them several times with council and at Planning Commission, but certainly would be welcomed to answer any questions now or after I finish through, running through our application. But other matters, for the record, I'd like to, sorry, some of the findings of fact with relation to this property. We certainly concur with the staff report that was presented previously by Mr. Brendel. We incorporate it by reference in our administrative case. We have additional commentary, as I will run through briefly here. This, like I said, this property was annexed in 2008. It is part of the city's growth plan. It was identified as an MXT area in the city's growth plan. When it was brought into the city, it was actually brought in at a zone comparable to what it was currently zoned in the county, which would have been R5, which was comparable to the existing zone in the county. However, this property has been identified as the city as MXT for quite some time, and that is what we are seeking today, is to actually trigger the MXT overlay as it's been identified in the City of Laurel master plan, which is consistent with Article 66B and is certainly permissible. Couple commentaries that I, a couple comments I will also make in regard to the Maryland National Capitol Park and Planning comments. Mr. Brendel referenced, they were on the record. This was a topic of discussion at an earlier hearing. They made some comments about the future of this property and how it should tie into the Conterra Town Center project. The zoning proposed for this property is consistent with the MXT zone that is in place for Conterra right now. The city's MXT zone is almost identical to the county's. Obviously, we're directly across the street and also adjacent to some other MXT zone properties, so we believe and we concur with the city that MXT is entirely appropriate for this property, particularly in relation to all the road improvements that are coming down the line, and this is exactly what an MXT transit-oriented development should look like. The other thing I'd like to make note of is the MNCP's comments noted what's called the five-year hold under Article 23A of the state code. They misinterpreted or had an outdated section of the law in their comments. It's actually been changed. In 2006, that section was revised. They raised some question about whether it's even appropriate or allowed to zone this property now in the midst of the five-year hold, and that law was changed in 2006. Zoning is entirely permissible. What is not is the development of the property within the five-year hold period. However, they also may waive the five-year hold period. So the five-year hold is not necessarily hard and fast, cannot do anything within those five years. Certainly, you can zone it, as we're doing now, and with the county's permission, you can actually develop it within the five-year hold. But again, that requires the county's permission, and we obviously have to come back to the city for a detailed site plan so you can see exactly what we're doing. So certainly, by this zoning action, you're not opening any doors or anything that you don't understand, and you certainly see this project again, at least once, if not more With that, I believe that, with that, I think I will go ahead and rest. Like I said, we've been down this road a couple times on this project, and I will open the floor to any questions from council, or obviously, if anyone raises any, any folks in the audience who raise any issues, I certainly will come back up and address them as necessary, or Mr. DePietro will. But this time, I'll go ahead and sit down and turn it back to council.
Thank you, Mr. DeVito.
Thank you.
Mr. Hadley, did you want to say anything, or you just want to rest on the comments of your attorney?
Of course.
Okay. Have no one else signed up to speak on this agenda item? Is there anyone else wishing to speak? Sorry, James Hadley?
No.
I apologize. No comments, sir? I apologize. Okay, Mr. Hadley was signed up and let the record show that he has opted not to speak. Is there anyone else wishing to speak on this agenda item? I'll recognize Councilwoman Mary Lehman from District One. Come on up, Mary. State your name and address for the record, and you have the floor.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. Mary Lehman, 16204. Julie Lane, Laurel, 20707. I came tonight because I happened to talk to Mr. Gibbs today, and he is an attorney working with the applicant on the stormwater portion of this plan, because it's the only thing, really, that is going to involve the county, that and the change in the zoning, if we were to do it before the five years is up. And he mentioned that there was some kind of meeting here tonight. My concern, as it always is, and it's a challenge when you have, you know, the city right up against the county, and you have two different processes about notification for impacted communities, and the two closest residential communities, Victoria Falls and Willshire Estates, are not really aware of this. And when I talked to Mr. Gibbs today, he kind of said, "Well, I don't know what to tell you about sort of where things are in the process, because they don't, you know, I'm not very involved right now, and, you know, the train has kind of left the station, and I don't know what to tell you, except maybe you should go by tonight." And I'm happy to be kind of a go-between and to, you know, relay to these two communities what's going on. I went, I know people in Victoria Falls. I don't, I've dealt with them on many issues before. I don't really know other people in this, in Willshire Estates, a small subdivision of about 65 homes with an HOA that meets monthly but is not terribly active. I talked to the president, and he said, "I have a hard time getting people out to the meetings," but he had no awareness, understanding nothing, you know, of what this plan was. He said, "Yeah, I've seen that the property is posted." So I was just concerned that there's kind of a little bit of a vacuum, and that's not, you know, anybody's fault. It's just how the process is, and I'm trying to fill, you know, sort of fill that void and, you know, figure out what role, if any, there is, and how I can, you know, get them involved, and, you know, hopefully, it's not, it's not too late. Mr. DePietro, I don't know if you...
We have a problem. We have a problem.
Okay. So that's, that's why I'm here.
Thank you, Mary.
Yeah.
Mr. DePietro?
Mr. Gibbs had called us to express Ms. Lehman's interest in having these two subdivisions or two developments in the, in the county and to address them. We have no problem going there at some point in time and sitting down, but as you well know, we are simply asking for the zoning of the land. We have no development plans. We haven't even started to market the site yet. However, one of the things we're a little short in this process, as you're aware of, is for every day that we continue through this process, we find out the county and the state are reducing our 25 acres to now down as much as only 17 acres left by the time the county takes the new-aligned Conti Road and the state highway finishes us at Virginia Manor and Van Duzen. So we'd like to at least get through the government process and the taking process before we sit down with any of the communities to say, "This is what we'd like to do on the property. We're not sure how much of the property will be left by the time these taking gets done," which we explained the other night at the work session.
All right. Thank you, Mr. DePietro.
Just really briefly, so you understand...
Lehman?
This is, these are executive branch at both the state and the county level. The county council or the district council has not done anything at all on this plan. That's, we're not involved in the rights-of-way issues that Bob mentioned or anything else, so...
I think, Mary, as you pointed out, there's a lot of fingers in the pie here, and that's part of the problem.
I know.
Okay? And I don't think, I mean, we've seen this before with other pieces of property in this area. Okay. Okay, if no one else signed up to speak, is there anyone else wishing to speak? Okay, we have a commitment from Mr. DePietro at such time, the applicant at such time as the, they've ironed out all the rights-of-way taking. They will be glad to sit down with the Homeowners Association of Willshire Estates in Victoria Falls and present to them their concept plan and how they plan to develop the property. All right. What's the pleasure of the council?
Mr. President, I move that we approve ordinance number 1729, map amended, map amendment as presented.
Yeah, excuse me for a minute. Let me, let the record indicate that I closed the public hearing at 7:16, and that subsequent to that, Mr. Smalls made a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Crery. Any discussion? Call or roll, Ms. Row.
Mr. Smalls?
I vote yes.
Ms. Crery?
Yes.
Ms. Nicholas?
Yes.
President Laz?
Yes. Thank you. Okay, move to agenda item number six, approval of minutes of the 69th meeting of October 12th, the 70th meeting of October 24th, and the 71st meeting of November 3rd. What's the pleasure of the council?
Mr. President?
Ms. Crery?
I move that we approve the minutes of the 69th, 70th, and 71st meetings.
I have a motion to have a second.
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Nicholas. Any discussion? Call or roll, Ms. Row.
Ms. Crery?
Yes.
Ms. Nicholas?
Yes.
Mr. Smalls?
I vote yes.
President Laz?
Yes. Move to agenda item number seven, report of the Mayor and City Council. I'll move first to Mr. Smalls.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just have a couple of things. I had an opportunity to attend the Laurel Regional Hospital's annual gala in Baltimore. It was a really worthwhile event, and as those of you who may have attended these galas in the past, you know that the funds go to help support the efforts of Laurel Regional Hospital. And finally, I had a chance to attend the Laurel Volunteer Fire Department's annual awards dinner, and I'd like to just simply congratulate all of the firemen, those who received awards and recognition, and those who didn't for a job well done. That's my report.
Thank you, Ms. Smalls. Ms. Nicholas?
Yesterday, I went to attend the service at St. March Church, which was very nice. And then last week, the mayor and myself and Donna, we went to the Taste of Laurel. That was very nice. And I also attended the Fireman's Breakfast, the first of this month, on Sunday. That's my report.
Thank you, Ms. Nicholas. Ms. Crery?
Thank you, Mr. President. In addition to the other events, I also attended with my colleagues the Laurel Cable's 25th anniversary celebration last Wednesday, and congratulations and a shout-out to everybody behind the scenes and involved with Laurel Cable. And I also would like to wish everyone a happy Thanksgiving. Thank you.
Thank you. Saturday, November 5, I had the pleasure of spending the morning at MML in Annapolis, winding up the completion of the convention planning activities. Wednesday, November 9, Patuxent River Commission met in Annapolis. We are proposing legislation to decrease the number of members of that commission from 33 to 25. It's a more manageable number in getting a quorum there to, to vote on issues. It'll probably be presented to the legislature this year for introduction next year, not this coming session, but the following session. Wednesday, November 9, I want to thank Ms. Crery for running the, leading the work session. The mayor and I had the pleasure of attending the Pilate High School Leadership Dinner. This is a dinner that's held once a year, and they pull leadership in, and they have a dinner, and it's a, it's a dinner where they're, in fact, hoping that the same people that have provided funds for their general fund will be providing funds for the coming year. And it was very enjoyable. We had the students presented a one-act skit about what it is to, what it means to go to Pilate High School. And we had a nice young lady who's been graduated for 10 years, who is now an attorney, come back and tell, tell the leadership what Pilate did for her and her education. And I'll ask Paul McCullough to join me at the podium. I have a proclamation here from the, in behalf of the mayor. Whereas November 15, 2011 is American Recycles Day, and whereas, as stewards of the environment, we are responsible for preserving and protecting our resources for ourselves and for future generations, and whereas recycling is an important part of the solution. By recycling aluminum, paper, glass, plastics, electronics, and other materials, we can save production and energy costs, reduce the negative impacts that the extraction and processing of virgin materials has on the environment, and decrease the impact on our landfills and incineration plants. Whereas, the American Recycles Day website encourages to have one day to educate and motivate, one day to get our neighbors, friends, and community leaders excited about what can be accomplished when we all work together, one day to make recycling bigger and better 365 days a year. Now therefore, I Craig A. Mo, Mayor of the City of Laurel, do hereby proclaim November 15, 2011, as National America Recycles Day in the City of Laurel, and call upon all citizens, businesses, and civic organizations to assist the city in its efforts to reduce the amount of recyclable materials going to landfills by increasing their participation in the city's recycling program, signed by Craig A. Mo, Mayor. Paul, say a few words.
I just want to say thank you to the residents of Laurel. We've seen a really big increase in recycling over, since we started going with the single stream. One of the exciting things was we had interns during the summer, and we had one particular intern that worked with us on recycling, and she made a really excited speech to the rest of her coworkers or interns, and even got the high school people excited about recycling. And we had a number of them at our electronic and paper shredding recycling event that came down and helped out. So it's, it's exciting to see people do recycling. It both reduces the cost to the city, because we don't have to pay as much to get rid of the recycled material, and it helps put materials back into the, into the green part that are reusable. So thanks to everyone on recycling.
Move to agenda item number eight, general public hearing. I'll open the general public hearing at 7:25. I have no one signed up to speak. Is there anyone wishing to speak? Seeing no one, I'll close the general public hearing at 7:25. Number nine, consideration of the recommendation of the sole source provider for the Laurel Anderson Murphy Community Center window project. Mr. Lotzky, you have the floor.
Good evening, everyone. As discussed at the last work session, we have some funds. We're fortunate to acquire some funds for the, from the state for renovations to the armory. That came with a preservation easement through the Maryland Historic Trust, so our improvements to the armory need to have approval from the trust prior to doing any work. One of the things we do want to do is do some window work at the armory. Now, the trust not approve any replacement of windows. They approved that we renovate the existing windows. To do that properly, we hired an architectural firm to draw up some bids or some specifications for us, and they recommended a company called Renew Restoration Incorporated out of Huntington, Maryland, to come out and then take a look, because they've done this kind of work before. So with that, we asked them to provide a bid to do a, do one window, and the window includes the exterior work, which means the brickwork, also the interior work, which means the interior walls, which, which needs some work also. This includes lental work and whatnot. So after discussing with the, with this with the administration and with Bob Manzi, our attorney, we decided that sole source bid was the best way to go, get this one window done, and then we can provide a larger package, hopefully, that, that can go out. The idea of getting one window done correctly with Maryland Historic Trust standards in mind was the way to go at this time, we felt. So I have before you a sole source bid from Renew Restoration from Huntington, Maryland at $35,250.
And just to clarify, that, when that window is done, that will create the specification for the restoration of the rest, rest of the windows. Is that correct, Mr. Lotzky?
That's correct. It will remove any, any question about how that window, rest of the windows are to look once they're renewed.
Okay. Okay, this was discussed, the work session on Wednesday, November 9. What's the pleasure of the council?
Mr. President?
Ms. Crery? Ms. Crary.
I recommend that we accept the armory window renovation, sole source, as set forth in Renew Restoration.
Thank you, Ms. Crary, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Mr. Smalls. Any discussion? Call or roll, Ms. Rowe?
Ms. Crary?
Yes.
Mr. Smalls?
I vote yes.
Ms. Nicholas?
Yes.
President LaZ?
Yes. Thank you. Move to agenda item number 10, consideration of a recommendation to reject the bids for the Laurel Municipal Center roof replacement. Mr. Lotzky?
Yes, sir. Again, discussed at the last work session, we received bids for renovation work or replacement work to the existing roof here at the municipal center. We have funding in the current CIP to do some work. We hired a consultant to come in to advise us exactly what needed to be done and what didn't need to be done at this time, since we knew funding would be a little bit short to do the entire project. We advertised the bid package in the October 4th Sentinel and also on our cable TV. We had a pre-bid meeting on the 14th of October, had four contractors attend. Bids were accepted until the 25th of October at 11:00 a.m. We had two bids come in. One was from Coal Roofing Company Incorporated out of Baltimore, Maryland for $34,331. Second one's from J&amp;K Contract Incorporated out of Capitol Heights, Maryland, at $80,000. And we received a bid after the 11 o'clock time from Colbertson Company. When we reviewed the bids and with the administration, with Mr. Manzi, we decided that we didn't like that spread between the first bid and the second bid, and we thought it'd be best to reject the bids at this time, go back out, try and get everybody to sharpen their pencils, and take another look at it.
We discussed this at the work session on Wednesday, November 9th. I'll entertain a motion to reject the bids.
Mr. President, I move that we reject the bids for the municipal center roof repairs as Mr. Lotzky has read into the record.
Thank you, Mr. Smalls. Do I have a second?
A second.
Thank you, Ms. Nicholas. Any discussion? Call or roll, Ms. Rowe?
Mr. Smalls?
I vote yes.
Ms. Nicholas?
Yes.
Ms. Crary?
Yes.
President LaZ?
Yes. Mr. Lotzky, we'll go out with the new bid, short order here?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Move to agenda item number 11, second public hearing with possible action, ordinance number 1730, an ordinance to amend Chapter 7, garbage, trash, weeds, et cetera, of the Laurel City Code, and providing an effective date. I've read the title under the record for the second reading. We had several amendments, were discussed at the work session on November 9th. We had one additional change at the request of the mayor and the administration, that was to remove the reference to once a week trash pickup and revert back to the original language of twice a week. Provided an opportunity to go to once a week, and we think that should be a separate issue if we ever have that arise in the future. Open the public hearing at 7:31. Have no one sound, signed up to speak? Is there anyone wishing to speak? Seeing no one, I will close the public hearing at 7:31. I'll entertain a motion as amended.
Mr. President.
Ms. Crary.
I recommend that we adopt ordinance number 1730, as read into the record and amended.
Thank you, Ms. Crary. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Mr. Smalls. Any discussion? Call or roll, Ms. Rowe?
Ms. Crary?
Yes.
Mr. Smalls?
I vote yes.
Ms. Nicholas?
Yes.
President LaZ?
Yes. Thank you, Ms. Rowe. Move to agenda item number 12, introduction and first public hearing on Resolution Number 22-11, a resolution to support the separation of the Baltimore Gas and Electric Company from the sale of Constellation Energy Group as part of its merger with Exelon Corporation. I've read the title under the record for the first reading. I'll open the public hearing at 7:32. I have no one signed up to speak? Is there anyone wishing to speak? Seeing no one, I'll close the public hearing at 7:32. This was discussed at the work session on Wednesday, November 9th, 2011. The mayor has looked at this, and he has no problem with us passing this resolution. It will go to the Public Service Commission. It's not going to the legislature. It's going to be for their consideration as they look at the sale of the Constellation Energy Group with Exelon Corporation. I'll entertain a motion to suspend the rules.
Mr. President, I move that we suspend the rules on Resolution Number 22-11.
Thank you, Ms. Smalls. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Crary. Call or roll, Ms. Rowe?
Mr. Smalls?
I vote yes.
Ms. Crary?
Yes.
Ms. Nicholas?
Yes.
President LaZ?
Yes. Thank you. I'll entertain a motion. What's the pleasure of the council?
Mr. President.
Ms. Crary.
I recommend that we adopt Resolution Number 22-11.
Can I have a motion? Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Nicholas. Any discussion? Call or roll, Ms. Rowe?
Ms. Crary?
Yes.
Ms. Nicholas?
Yes.
Mr. Smalls?
I vote yes.
President LaZ?
Yes, and I'll note that this will go forward to the Public Service Commission under copy of a letter. Is that correct? Thank you, Kristy. Okay, that concludes the agenda. Is there anything else to come before the council? Meeting's adjourned.